Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, August 9, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 10, 2020, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and Tri-Town News. Second, on December 29, 2020, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 29, 2020, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9 North, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and a decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature when the chairman opens up the hearing for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video, and you will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you are calling, and you can press *9 to raise or lower your hand, and *6 to mute and unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
Here.
Mr. Seiya?
Here.
Say he's been excused.
Mr. Roscoe has been excused. Mr. Stanton has been excused. Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
And Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance first? Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. And to the good public. We stand one nation, under God. Invisible but liberating. For all.
Thank you. Mr. Troply, you might swear to the professionals, please.
Okay, professionals, raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you'll give this evening be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, out to God.
I do.
Okay, so tonight we have Mr. Cunliffe, Ms. Fero, Ms. Beam, and Ms. Draguer, I believe, is here somewhere. All sworn.
I'm here too, Ron.
Thank you.
Mr. Howard's also here.
There you go. Mr. Howard, good to see you. Awesome. Okay, we have a full compliment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, approval of minutes.
There are no minutes to approve tonight.
Vouchers?
We have no vouchers.
Correspondence?
We have a letter from Christopher Hanlon, the attorney for case number BA 21-06. Robert Liskowski, which is on tonight's agenda. He is asking the board to take jurisdiction and carry the application to August 23, 2021 with no further notice. Also, Brookstone at Casola Farms was already carried to this night, and we've informed Mr. Hanlon that he may not be reached and would then get carried to another night, and he was okay with that. There's also an email from Salah Fury.
Wait, let him pull that one first.
Okay. If anyone wants online for case number BA 2106, Robert Lewowski, this case will be carried to August 23. The board will take jurisdiction. Be carried to the 23 with no further notice.
Brookstone at Casola.
No, no, this one, email.
Oh, sorry. There's an email from Salah Fury regarding DE Robertson. It has been pointed out to us that my client owns adjacent lot 6, which must be merged into the lot, which is the subject of this application. We are going to send revised plans and an amended application include the, including this lot. Therefore, we will not be appearing this evening. Once this is rescheduled, we are re-notice to the public.
So, we really don't need to do anything?
Just let the public know it's not being heard tonight.
This case number BA 2115, EE Robinson, this LLC is going to be re-adjourned and will be rescheduled at another time.
That's all correspondence.
That's all the correspondence.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have any resolutions?
Unresolution. Case number BA 21-12, 272 LMR Holdings LLC. Resolution granting use variants and bulk variants for expansion of a non-conforming use to install a commercial generator.
Okay, I didn't see it in the notice. Is that an add-on, Eileen?
No, that was on the agenda.
Yeah. I don't. And I'm mine.
It's not on the one that's online either, Eileen. All right, maybe I messed up then.
Eileen, I don't have it either. I'm sorry.
Okay, you have a list of the eligible voters?
Mr. Cantor, Mr. Hughes, Mr. Mertens, Mr. Gonzalez, and Chairman Nansen.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion by Mr. Mertens. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Okay, applications before the board. Case number BA 2107-366 Ramtown-Greenville Road. LLC. This is a used variants application of 366 Ramtown-Greenville Road LLC is applicant owner seeking a used variance for bifurcated application to construct a 20,088 square foot warehouse within a wooded portion at the rear of the site in a 1,614 square foot loading breezeway be constructed to the existing building. They are also proposing to utilize the existing 17,485 square foot one-story masonry building as a warehouse, 14,443 square foot and office space of 3,402 square foot, removing the existing site driveway, relocating it approximately 150 feet easterly so that it is no longer within the existing 150-foot wetland buffer on the site, as well as parking three bio-detention basins on premises known as Block 3, Lot 29, 366 Ramtown-Greenville Road. This application was originally scheduled to be heard January.
How can you step up and say you see the light from there?
25th, 2021, when it was carried to April 12, 2021, with no further notice. In April 12, the application was carried to May 10, 2021, with no further notice. After some testimony, May 10, 2021, the application was carried June 28 with no further notice. On June 28, 2021, the application was completed. The applicant completed their testimony after public questioning and comments. This application was carried to August 9 with no further notice. Per summation in vote, expiration date, August 31, 2021. Eligible voters. I'm going to let you jump in, Eileen, because I think we have certificate voter certifications here.
All the members that were not certified did certify, so we have Mr. Cantor, Mr. Hughes, Mr. Mertens, Mr. Moretti, Mr. Seiya, Mr. Gonzalez, and Chairman Nansen. So everyone in attendance is eligible to vote.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Pape is on the meeting.
Yes, Mr. Pape, I'm going to turn it over to you for summation, and then I ask my professionals plus our board attorney to, you know, give a summation, and then we'll see what the board, the pleasure of the board here.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Chairman, board members, board professionals, Kenneth Pape of the firm Heilbronn Pape on behalf of the applicant this evening, and to every board member who made that extra effort to be certified, to be prepared to vote this evening, I thank you on behalf of the applicant and personally. This is an application for use variance relief. It is a unique application because it is a building that has existed since the late 1950s. As we were able to demonstrate to the board through aerial photographs going back to the 1950s, this industrial building was constructed just about the year 1960 and has been in continuous use since that time. There appears to have been some additions to the building in 1970, but the industrial uses have remained unchanged. We also provided to this board, in addition to the aerial photographs, we provided the township's records of the many industrial tenants that have come and gone with the assistance of Fire Chief Lewis, who retrieved all of his records of the tenants that were there. They didn't go back to, all the way to the beginning, but went back to the early 1990s. We demonstrated that there were at least a dozen different industrial uses at the site, and at times, there were as many as four industrial uses. Your applicant is asking for permission to use this building. No, I stand, your applicant is not asking for permission to use the building for its business purposes. That use was approved by the township when it issued the certificate of occupancy in 2018, which was when our clients purchased the building. They removed all the tenants and they occupied the building just with their family business, which, as you heard Mr. Stefanski testify, is, is the business of distributing packaged foods. That is the use that would continue. What we're asking this board is a D2 variance to permit an expansion of the building. The expansion is modest. It's 17,293 square feet of storage building and just over 3,000 square feet of office associated with that storage. Before the applicant came before this board, the applicant did a number of things. The applicant spent time with the Environmental Commission. We actually went to, had meetings with them on three separate occasions. We spent time with Fire Chief Lewis. I personally was at two of those meetings where we incorporated all of his recommendations for fire suppression in the building, fire hydrants on the site, extension of a 12-inch water main to the site, and we also worked out a a firefighting path on the site, all of which was confirmed by the Fire Chief in correspondences to the board. We made application to the board for a use variance that was not exactly the one that you saw. Your professionals were generous with their time this past winter. Mr. Chairman, as you read those, those meetings that were carried, they were carried as we continued to work with your engineer, your shade tree, your arborist, and with your planner, not to gain an approval, but to make the application more conforming and to eliminate the items that were of concern to them. So we spent an inordinate amount of time working with your professionals. And I think that the record reflected that your engineer found that the plans that were presented were credible and that we could develop the plans as shown. There was also some positive comments about the stormwater and other improvements that were offered by the applicant. And your planner also, at the conclusion of the testimony of our planner, indicated that it was credible testimony and found that the, that it was, that it was a well-organized and credible presentation. What your applicant has offered to the town, what your applicant has offered to the zoning board, is substantial. The site is in disrepair. The site has not had any, any modifications for many years. Your applicant began by offering an environmental cleanup of the site. Dr. Walker pointed out that there are encroachments in the wetlands, there are encroachments in the flood, flood plains, and he indicated that all of the encroachments in the wetlands would be cured by this application. All of the fencing and asphalt and other improvements that were installed by others would be removed, and all of those areas would be restored with natural vegetation. As to the flood hazard areas, he indicated that the driveway would be moved approximately 150 feet away from the muddy brook, and that it would be in an area that would be far less intrusive. He also, Dr. Walker also shared with you that all of the proofs that he provided to you for your consideration, he first went to the NJDEP and presented this outline, and he testified that it was, that this, what was offered was consistent with what the DEP would approve for the site. So there was substantial environmental improvements that were offered by your applicant. Also, this site has no stormwater management. Although we sit on the banks of the muddy brook, there's no stormwater management. The, currently, the storm, all water sheet flows off the site, most of it going directly into the muddy brook. What we indicated to the board was that our client had directed his engineer to create a fully conforming stormwater plan. Fully conforming meant that the new rules promulgated by the DEP this March for stormwater management and your township rules would be fully addressed with a stormwater system where currently there is none. We also offered considerable aesthetic improvements. The building politely is old and tired, and the building plans that were presented by Steve Redasti had also gone through a number of iterations with, having been reviewed by Ms. Beam. The, we were very pleased that we received such a positive reception to the final version of the building. The building was designed to be a modern, attractive building with an, with an attractive streetscape from the adjacent roadway. It also had a unique feature, where currently, all of the loading occurs at the front of the building and is highly visible to the traveling public. An alcove in the middle of the building was created, and in that alcove was the only location that we would have loading docks. So when, when a truck was loading or unloading, they would be in the alcove with the building on three sides, three sides of that truck, thus creating a, a sound attenuation system for the activities associated with the truck loading and unloading. The, the site is, is, has not been landscaped in a very long time. We offered a very substantial landscaping plan, designed to be attractive, but far more than just being attractive, we introduced a buffer plan where there is none. There's no buffer plan for this site. The site's development predated buffering. We indicated that we'd have to remove a portion of the building to accommodate the buffers, and we made a statement that we would have 100% compliant buffers with the exception of a very thin strip of the building that exists that really could not be removed. But in every other respect, your applicant agreed that there would be a farmland buffer and a residential buffer wherever it was required, and we agreed that we'd be pleased to work with your professionals to accomplish that. The app, the request that was made is a bifurcated D2 variance. Every commitment that your applicant made is going to be reviewed and ultimately approved by this board and the board's professionals, or this project doesn't get built. All of those commitments remain our positive statements to you. We are prepared to return and to do all that we promised. Similarly, all that we promised to do with the DEP remains the conditions that would have to be met. If we're unable to meet those, we don't have an approval. A couple of, just a couple of other things that I think are worth pointing out. And when we spent time with Fire Chief Lewis, he was very concerned about the fact that this used to have a water tower that had fallen apart, and the building was essentially without a firefighting supply. He asked the applicant to connect the building to a firefighting supply, and the applicant did that voluntarily previously. He also asked that we make a commitment that the entire building would be fully suppressed, old and new would be fully suppressed, and those commitments were made. Mr. Chairman and board members, I think that the opportunity that we had to present to you a very thorough history of the property, that history that was presented through the title reports, the township's records, and those photos demonstrated that this has been an industrial building, a part of the Howell community for 60-plus years. We're not asking to introduce industrial. We're asking for a modest modification to accommodate our client's business in exchange for which all of these benefits to the township and to, and the citizens of the township are offered by the applicant. I believe that is a very responsible and well-earned. That's a responsible approach and a well-earned variance. We respectfully ask that the board consider this relief favorably, knowing that we are looking forward to returning with a full site plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Troply?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I just want to make sure that everyone can hear me. That everyone able to hear what I'm about to say.
Yes.
If not, let me know. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Members of the board, professionals. As a board attorney, it's my obligation to provide board members with a framework for which they can arrive at a decision that they themselves believe is appropriate in this case. Just to remind the board, and we do have Mr. Gonzalez, this is probably one of the more significant cases that he's been involved in, that it is your obligation to weigh and assess the testimony of all the witnesses and all of the evidence that was presented. And I also want to bear in mind that there were five affirmative votes that are required. This is a use variance, so it's considered a supermajority. Now, Mr. Pape has hit some very good points with respect to a D2 variance. I just want to advise the board that there's a difference in the burden of proof between a D1 or Medici variance versus a D2 variance. This is a lesser burden. This is not that enhanced burden of proof that you see in Medici. This is a lesser burden, what I think Ms. Beam actually mentioned that in her review letter. So the proof is somewhat different. They're not as extensive or expansive in the Medici case. There has been testimony on the record by not only the board professionals, but also witnesses that this application consists of a building that has been in continual use since at least 1960. This is not a new use, which is why this is not considered the Medici or a D1-type variance. So just in terms of the law, the law that controls here would be the Burbridge decision, and reminding the board that you have already granted D2 variance to permit the expansion of a lawful use, which in this case, you make the determination is lawful or not. I think the testimony would indicate it was predated zone scheme in this area. So you have power to grant the expansion in particular cases and for special reasons. Some of the things to keep in mind as you move forward in your deliberations would be, is this, is this application giving the board an opportunity to improve the site? Well, you know, look at the evidence. Listen to the testimony. Burridge says that aesthetic improvements alone are, are sufficient special reasons that they serve the purpose of zoning. But it also says that more than just site beautification is required. So some of the things that can say are other special reasons available, removing structures from buffer areas, revegetating environmentally sensitive areas, bringing the water main extension, making it available to other people. Does it serve the public good and the general welfare? Stormwater management on a site where none existed before. And importantly, can the site accommodate the improvement? And is the general welfare promoted by the granting of this variance? And once you make your positive findings, if you do make the positive findings, you only need one special reason, as I understand it, to support the purposes of zoning. And if you do find that this application furthers the goal of zoning, then you have to now analyze whether or not the proposed expansion satisfies the negative criteria. There's two prongs. That relief could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and nearby properties and not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the master plan zoning ordinance. So it's a balance that you have to make when you do your fact-finding and your analysis. And again, you are the fact-finders, not the applicants, not anyone else. You determine the facts, you make the decisions. I would also say that any other relief that's granted, pardon me, that is reviewed and required under C variances, if you do find that a use variance is appropriate, I would take the position that C variances are subsumed into the use variance. And, and also, and Mr. Pape brings a very important point. The board's going to have another opportunity at preliminary and final site plan and review the site and continue to make improvements for the public good. And it should also be brought to the members of the public that are here this evening that they also will have the opportunity to comment and ask questions at that time, so. Lot, but basically, these are the findings of facts that you need to find, go find by a majority, or then the variance can be granted. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I think I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen, do you have anything?
I mean, I think that Ron summed up everything that I would have thought to say, so I agree. I think that they have put testimony on the record identifying a lot of positive impacts associated with, you know, the furtherance of the development of the site that would not be there if not for this application. And I do think that the burden of proof in my, and from a planning point of view, was met by Ms. Cafone in her testimony at the last meeting. So other than that, I have nothing to add.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So obviously, we, we talked about this being a bifurcated application. Under use variance, they're not required to present a stormwater management report and design. But as part of the application, as Mr. Pape indicated, over the various winter months, they came with an original stormwater management design underneath the old regulations, completely revised the site, site plan from a stormwater management perspective to comply with the new regulations that came into place marsh this year. So as I mentioned, I'm satisfied with what they've depicted on the plans is, is going to be pretty close to what it needs to be for finals, for, for our site plan, should the board real favorably on this application. And I just want to summarize a bunch of other conditions that the applicant did agree to, just so it's refreshed for the board's memory. They indicated that all the, all the goods that go from this property are prepackaged, pre-canned. There's no food processing on the site. They indicated the warehouse in the back, that's the expansion. There would be no office space or mezzanine space for that. They indicated that there would be no parking in any of the drive-aisles or loading areas, and this would be furthered by the applicant agreeing to strip fire lanes, put up signage, and also agreeing to Title 39 restrictions on the site. They agreed at site plan to provide masonry refuse enclosures as we typically require for commercial applications. They indicated that both buildings would be a single-user owner occupied with no tenants. They indicated that there would be no retail or visiting for sales to the site. They also indicated that, pause, as I'm reading through all my notes, there would be no storing of hazardous flammable or pollutants on the site. Under site plan, if the board does real favorably, they'd add two additional parking spaces and revisit parking for the applicant's truck traffic. They indicated they would provide strobes for all trucks during evening if should any activities proceed beyond 6:00 PM or over the weekend. They also agreed to price site, site triangle at the driveway and trim any trees in the public right-of-way that interfere with the site triangle requirement. They also agreed to no left-turn restriction out of the site. They also did agree to working language into the resolution regarding dictating the, the truck traffic to and from the site to be controlled by the applicant at the, you know, to the acceptance of the board. And I think that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Oh, and one big item, too. As far as proposed tractor-trailer traffic to the site, they did agree to a restriction on it only occurring between 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM during the weekdays. And I think that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
If I may correct, no left-turn movements for trucks, Mr. Cunliffe. If I may correct, no left turn movements for trucks, Mister Conleth. No left turn movements for trucks.
That's acceptable, Mister Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Board, what's a pleasure of the board?
Mister Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm happy that, I'm pleased, I should say, that we've had some time to digest. You know, all the testimony of the applicant. And that we, as board members, know all too important. What stormwater runoff means to the tenants, the residents around the property. I myself personally have witnessed in a thirteen state region. Far too much vegetation being removed and, and, and stormwater causing issues across the entire northeast. We have to do a better job, is what I'm saying. So with that, I believe the applicant is moving in that direction. And with the improvements that are being incorporated into the. Site. I believe the residents will benefit from the stormwater management. I believe the residents will benefit from the eco slash environmental improvements. To the, to muddy brook. And for those reasons, I would like to give this applicant a motion to move forward.
Have a motion by Mister Seiya. Do I have a second?
Chair. Um, I'd like to add to Mister Seiya in reviewing these uh, these, these recordings. Things that stood out to me were the stormwater improvements, getting out of the buffers, really cleaning up all of that. Um, cleaning up the site, the aesthetics of the building. I really think a key factor too is the one going to the one use, basically, you know, the, the owner doing. Solely his business there rather than several different businesses. And best uh, based on all the testimony, I'd like to second Mister Seiya's motion.
Have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mister Cantor?
No.
Mister Hughes?
Yes.
Mister Mertens?
Yeah, members of the board and Mister Chairman, um, after reviewing and spending many hours reviewing this testimony. Placed on the record by the applicant and his professionals. And I've also heard from the residents. I would like to put the findings of fact onto the record. And as Mister Tropoli says, my decision is gonna be based on the balancing act. I heard some Mister Pape, you made a very good case. And I think there was a lot of positive points that came from this application. And everything that Mister Seiya and what Mister Hughes pointed out are absolutely right. I believe the entry drive is in a much better location. I also believe that the stormwater management is a vast improvement on this site. The landscaping overall is considerably better. And the architectural part of this building, even though we're not gonna see it, it's still. But the other thing, one more thing was also the chairman said, and I agree with him. Approving this site would give us a little bit more leverage on imposing conditions on the site. And I believe um, that is good. But here is some of the problems I'm running into with this. I do not believe that this is what the intent of our town as far as zoning goes. This site is only here because it's grandfathered in. It was in existing use before nineteen sixty. And going further with this application, I do believe. That isn't, it is not gonna be in the best interest of the residents and the town. I believe it's a very good, uh, the applicant has done a lot of concessions. He's made, you know, done a lot and I appreciate it, but it's just not in the right spot. My vote is no.
Mister Moretti?
Yes.
Mister Seiya?
You're muted, Mister Seiya.
Yes.
Mister Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
I just wanna make the comment, you know, I, I hear all of the board members. I, I've heard from the residents. But most of all, I, I look back at common sense. We have flooding there at, at the bridge, right down at the muddy brook there. Water washes off of this site into the road. That, that's noted. I've seen it. There is no basis of regulation of this property at the time. It's existing. And if we do nothing, we get nothing. What we get is. A, a, a company that can do what they want. They could have four, five, six businesses running out of there. There's areas in the wetlands that's fenced off with stone in it. That they could utilize that property. They don't have to quit using it. There's nothing that the township could do to force them not to. And as far as controlling the amount of truck traffic, nothing that we can do. It's existing prior and it can continue as is, however they wanna operate. They have a C O for it. They, there's been existing businesses, different types of business. Not just warehousing, not just, there's been all different types of businesses there. That could continue. With an approval. We have a resolution where testimony has been put on the record on the basis of their operations. If that changes, that gives code enforcement, that gives the township. The right to go in and say, no, you can't do this. This is not a permitted use. This is not what you were granted at, at, in the resolution. So they would have, whoever's in there would either have to face summonses or come back to the board. And then at that time, try to explain why they're gonna, why they're doing that. But right now, we have no control over anything that happens there. Other than, you know, i- i- if it was a medical supply business going in there. That, that could be something that might cause something, but other than that, we have no control. My vote is yes, because I want a resolution to clean up this property. To have control over the property, at least, you know. In an aspect that code enforcement knows exactly what's permitted there at this point, from this point forward. This is what's gonna happen with the property and nothing else could happen other than that. So my vote is yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Chairman and all board members, I thank you so much for the deliberations and care that was placed in the decision. On behalf of our clients and personally, thank you and good night.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Eileen, we're gonna take a five minute break, if you don't mind.
Okay, the board will now take a five minute recess. The zoning board will now reconvene. Thanks, Mark.
K B L, right? I, Eileen?
Yes, and we have Sal Alferi is in the uh, meeting.
Okay, uh, okay, okay, case. Before the board, case number B A seventeen oh two A, K B L Trading Company. amended preliminary final major site plan. Application K B L Trading is applicant owner seeking amended preliminary and final major site plan approval. To convert the front basin from an infiltration basin to a wet pond. Install a fence around the front of the basin, both, both of which are proposed within a required fifty foot residential buffer. Premises known as block forty nine, lot eight oh one, two eighty one Squankum Yellow Book Road. Squankum Lakewood Farmingdale Road, County Road forty seven. Expiration date, November tenth, twenty twenty one. If for members of the board, this is the Gerordie Golf Court location. Okay, Mister Alferi?
Good evening, Mister Chairman, members of the board. Salvatore Alferi on behalf of the applicant. Do you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And Eileen, Christine Cafone is our planner. I'm not sure if you let her in as a panelist, but if you haven't, would you please do so?
Sure.
Okay, and this, we, I started on this project probably ten, twelve years ago. Um, for various improvements and expansion of the Vic Gerard Golf Cart Facility. Uh, K B L Trading purchased the property from the Vic Gerard family. Um, and has been constructing the improvements that were approved by this board over the years. Um, during the course of that construction, there were several field changes that were made through the board professionals. And informally with the, with the board, but the most recent change that was necessitated. By during construction was to change the basin at the front of the property to a wet basin. Uh, we filed an application for that relief, for that approval with the variances that are associated with it. And we noticed the public, our witness, witnesses tonight are Mike Geller, who is our design engineer. And he'll run through the professional reports point by point to cover the comments. We will agree to address all the comments. And then Christine Cafone is our planner. She'll provide the planning testimony necessary to support the variance because it is a D two variance. Um, and having said that, I'd like to call Mister Geller.
Can we just get everybody sworn in at one time real quick?
Sure.
Mister Troply?
Yes, Mister Geller and Miss Cafone, raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so have to God.
I do.
Right, Christine, state your full name on the record, please.
It's Christine Nazaro, N A Z Z A R O, Cafone, C O F is in Frank, O M E.
Thank you, and Mister Geller. You're right, you have to unmute, Mike. You are muted, Mike.
Okay, got me?
Yes.
Good now, go ahead.
Michael Geller, G E L L E R.
Thank you. All sworn, Mister Chair.
Uh, Mister Geller, you were, you were qualified as the engineer on many of the applications before the board at, on this property. But for the record, since this is a new application, would you place your credentials on the record, please?
Yes, I have forty six years of experience. I graduated from Stevens Institute of Technology in nineteen seventy five. I have over forty six years of experience in the areas of civil engineering, land use, planning, zoning. And I've testified before this board many times, as well as provided consulting to various zoning and planning boards on many occasions.
And, and we're seeking to have you qualified tonight only as, as a professional engineer. Is that correct?
Yes.
Mister Chair, we request that you accept his credentials.
We accept Mister Geller's credentials, sir.
Thank you. Mister Geller, would you briefly summarize the history of this site? And then get into in more detail, obviously, the, the um, application that's before the board this evening?
Yes, I will. Um, as usual, Mister Conleth has done a very thorough job in summarizing the report. And in his report, the history of the site and what was previously approved. It's dated June twenty sixth, twenty twenty one. I will use that as a basis. This site is the Vic Gerard Golf Car site at two eighty one Squankum Road. It's located in the S E D, Special Economic Development Zone. Has about sixteen point nine acres in area. It was uh, subject of a use variance prior to my involvement back in two thousand eight. Because it was selling low speed vehicles, it was considered to be a nonconforming use. And it received that use variance approval in two thousand eight. We again represented the board in twenty seventeen. It was before the board for a use variance. Uh, and preliminary and final major site plan for an expansion of the use to propose. Um, storage buildings, demolition of certain other buildings. The construction of a seventeen thousand three hundred fifty six one story building. Which would serve for their offices and for the showroom for the golf cars and a part sales area. And there were certain variances associated with that, in addition to the use itself. That would be for a six foot high fence in the front yard of the site, which was approved for thirty nine parking spaces where seventy six are required. For a two thousand one hundred and sixty square foot showroom, part sales area where one thousand square foot is permitted. And for not providing a fifty foot perimeter residential buffer. To the Squankum Road side of the site, because there's a residence located across from that. Um, those variances were approved and there's nothing in this application that's changing any of those variances uh, at this time. The reason we are here is um, the front portion of the site within that buffer, that fifty foot buffer I just talked about. There, um, Eileen, maybe you could put on the field change plan that was part of the submission. If you want to put that on a shared screen, uh, the board will see. Thank you.
So then you just minimize that, you hit share screen, then you bring it up.
Beautiful. Thank you.
And Mister Geller, would you identify what the plan is that's before the board?
That is the submitted field change plan. It's dated October fifteenth, twenty twenty. With the latest revision date number two of May sixth, twenty twenty one.
And that's A five on the exhibit list.
So that's okay. Thank you. Um, what got us here is you can see there's a basin on the right side of the plan is the Squankum Road frontage of the property. And there is a basin that's located in front of the proposed building, which is currently under construction. Um, that basin was proposed to be an infiltration basin. And in September of last year, there was a problem in that after large storm events, the basin was not draining dry within the requisite seventy two hours. Uh, the contractor indicated that the basin was constructed to great. It had not yet received its six inch sand bottom. At that time, there was a meeting held with the owner, Mister Lynch, the owner's representative, Steve Gerard. Contractor Ralph Rocco, the inspector from C M E Associates, Jordan Rizzo, an engineer with C M E Associates. And members of the Geller Civ staff. They excavated a test pit and they found a clay layer that was inhibiting the infiltration of the water that was approximately eight to nine feet deep. It was decided to install two stone wicks. Stone wicks are excavations that are filled with stone that are intended to help the water infiltrate through the basin bottom. Um, then again, on December third, twenty twenty, the same parties had a, a meeting at the site. Uh, they contractor had installed the wicks and the basin was still not draining dry. At that time, it was designed, decided and agreed upon by the township engineering staff. And the owner and us to uh, convert the basin to a wet, permanent wet basin. Um, we had originally thought that going back to the board was not required, but the, uh, in referring it to the board. It was decided and it would probably be best to come back to the board, amend the site plan approval. And memorialize this change uh, in a resolution. And that's why we are here. Um, Mister Conleth's report, if I go back to that, he also talks about other field changes that were done. There were five in total that were done administratively, uh, one of which was involved. An appearance at the board, but no formal application. And I will testify that there's nothing here that's changing any of the conditions that were imposed on those prior field changes. So having said that, the basin is designed as a wet basin. It was enlarged somewhat. And there was a wall proposed to make for a vertical uh, side, abutting the building and the westerly side of that basin. I'll go through Mister Conleth's report now and basically. And basically, the basin is designed to handle all the required storms and meet the requirements of the best management practices. Except it's a little bit smaller than usual wet basins, usually have a drainage area of twenty acres, this one has a drainage area. About four point eight acres. So in the bottom of Mister Conliffe's report on page three, bottom of page three, I'll go through the variances waivers and items of discussion. B one is the variances previously approved, I think I just described them A through D. None of those are being changed, and there's none of those conditions are being changed.
Okay, so Mike, I have to just stop you, that's actually not the case, your basin is bigger than it was before. So the relief that you receive for the basin location in the buffer. Is now exacerbated by the bigger wet basin.
I'm not, Jennifer, I didn't get to that point yet, you're right.
Right, but you just said that none of the variances were being changed, that you said that twice now, so.
No, but the six foot high fence in the front yard, the thirty nine parking spaces, the two thousand one hundred sixty square foot showroom. And the fifty foot perimeter residential buffer to adjacent lot eight oh two. Granted, that's being changed and that there's a buffer, but the buffer is still provided, but yes, that's being changed. Number two is variances required, buffers and screening. He points out that the buffer was previously proposed and approved within, strike that. The infiltration basin was previously proposed and approved within the same general vicinity. Change in basin type going from a basin that was designed to be dry. Between storm events to one that has a permanent pool and modification of the footprint requires approval of this board. And in regard to the fence proposed, should the board grant approval for the wet pond? He takes no exemption to the granting of the variance for a four foot high fence, provided is no greater than four foot in height. And is more than fifty percent open, the applicant should provide testimony regarding the makeup of the fence conforming, confirming same. The basin, the fence proposes a split rail, four foot high split rail fence. Upon which there's a screen mesh that is proposed to keep any children out from crawling under the rails. So it does meet the requirements of being four foot high and fifty percent open. As far as the previously granted waiver, Miss Cofone will address the buffer variance as required for this. But that's, I'll, I'll, I'll address the technical engineering items. The previously granted waivers, number three, there were waivers granted for sidewalks along Squonkum Road. And for the lighting intensity waiver. Number four are the waiver checklist waivers, and there are many because this is. This was a one sheet plan submission to show proposed change only. And in those checklist waivers, there's three items that were cited that need comment, number ten. The basin drains to the county system, that we will need to go back to the county and obtain a letter of no interest, we agree to that, of course. And checklist number eleven, the Free Hill Soil Conservation District approval. Upon approval by the board, we will need to go back and get a real conservation district recertification. And checklist number seventeen, there was a condition in the twenty seventeen approval. That the applicant agreed to provide an easement to the township permitting access to the sewer line. That was done, that was actually done and recorded on April thirtieth, twenty nineteen. That copy of that deed will be provided for the board's records. As far as additional waivers required, we've asked for checklist item forty, the key map, rating plan, utility plan. As I said, the. Proposed changes were sufficiently shown on one sheet with details as needed. So we're asking for waivers of those three. As Charlie points out, he takes no exception to the waivers. In B four and five, with the exception of ten, eleven, and seventeen, which I addressed. Continuing in the report. The applicant should provide testimony in support of these waivers and variances. As I said, Miss Cofone will address the buffer variance. And the waivers, as I said, were all having to do with this being an amended application as opposed to a new application. There's no material changes to the other submission requirements. Number seven, the applicant should provide testimony regarding all existing and proposed site operations in accordance with the prior board approvals. The board, the use and operation of the site is exactly the same as it was represented in twenty seventeen. Number eight, we note that the previous approval required no outdoor storage of parts or dismantled vehicles. The applicant also testified that the outdoor storage of golf carts would be eliminate, eliminated, the applicants provide testimony confirming same. There are six storage buildings shown on the left side of the plan, that's the rear of the site. Four of those buildings have already been constructed, two are being reserved for future construction. But those buildings are serving to store the carts and keep any of the carts off outside from outside storage. Number nine, the applicant previously testified that the fueling facility and waste oil tanks were to be relocated and put on concrete slabs. The proposed, proposed location should be shown on the plan, we will do that, right now. There's an existing coop that was on the site that has not yet been demolished, as I said, the site is currently under construction. When that is demolished and those locations are confirmed, they're gonna, we'll show that on the plan if that's satisfactory. Number ten.
Mike, I just want to clarify that, that's going to be shown on a resolution appliance submitter, right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Number ten has to do with the basin, and that's really the reason we are here. The C M E field change request, they, C M E as the township engineering inspector on the project. Issued a letter dated February twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, which I believe is in your packet as well. Requested field change was reviewed by their office and the changes were found to be in accordance with the quarter quantity, quality and groundwater recharge requirements. Of the store, of the B M P, Charlie had a few additional requirements, we agreed to meet all of those. A has to do with the ability to keep the, the pond wet at the permanent pool depth. And what means we would do, typically a water budget analysis is done, those are done over a period of six months. We would represent that there's a hydrant existing right next to the basin. And we have agreed to use the hydrant to fill the pool if it falls below the permanent pool. And the pool elevation will be marked on the wall that's adjacent to the pool or by whatever means that the township engineer or Charlie. Requires, and that if it gets below the permanent pool elevation. The owner will know to fill the basin up to the required depth, the space in this proposed to be clay lined. So once it receives water from a stormwater event, it really shouldn't fall below that. But if it does by means of evaporation or anything like that, the ability is there to refill it to the permanent pool elevation.
Mike, I would just ask that. You guys submit like a revised stormwater management O and M, just indicating that as part of the requirement for the basin, just so it's clear what the, what the applicant's obligations are.
Mike, can I, can I interrupt you just a second, are y'all planning on? Putting an aeration system in this?
Yes, yes, there's an aerator proposed.
Okay, good. Keep the water from going stagnant.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mike, if I, I'm just gonna jump in and try to speed this along a little bit, right? So you're gonna provide specs for the aerator and just confirm its proper size for the, for the wet pond?
Yes.
And then as far as. Thermal effects. Contours, we had a comment about like the contours, there's some areas where the water depth is only, you know, a foot or less, can the contours in the basin be reconfigured? So we have a two, full two foot entire footprint?
I believe you had a conversation with Gary Chang in my office today, we agreed to provide access to the basin. But take the access road out of the basin since it'll be a wet pond, and that will enable us to provide the two foot depth through the whole basin.
Okay, and then as far as D and E, I had comments, just revise in the plan and the report, just to make sure all the outlet control structures are. In accordance with each other, that's, you'll do that, and then you'll also revise the calculations for the CNs to make sure everything's impervious, impervious to split. And then. There was an inlet added on one of the adjacent properties as a field change to rectify a drainage issue on one of the neighboring properties that was handled as a field change?
That was in the, at the direction of the engineering department inspections, and that was downstream of the discharge.
Okay, and then just. Talking about the fire, prior administrative approval, so there was no change to any of the.
Charlie, before you go on, if I may, as far as the thermal effects, that'll answer that comment. And Cherry's comment regarding additional shade trees will be provided around the perimeter of the basin. To provide additional shade and reduce the thermal impact.
Okay, that's acceptable, and then just to go back to the fire, prior field change that we approved administrative, I just want to get it back on the record and make sure it's clear. There's no change to the retail use thousand square foot of the building, right?
No.
Fire official signed off on a fire hydrant removal of the fire suppression for the building?
Yes.
And. All buildings on the site, so there was additional or existing bathrooms in one of the buildings. Behind the main building that were proposed to remain, there's no separate users, right, the Victorard is the sole user of the site, right?
One use, one tenant, yes, one, one user, yes.
And then the last one, when you were here last, there was a talk about four vehicles and a tractor trailer that would be parked on the site. We had a question about the location of where that occurred, if it is on the gravel for like a paved parking space for those vehicles to be provided, can you provide that?
Yeah, we could show them to be on the existing pavement that's going to remain near the building, if there's any other locations, we'll show asphalt.
So I would take no exception to that, as long as it doesn't conflict with any fire lanes, loading areas, or primary entrances to the building.
Understood.
That's all I have, Mister Chair.
Okay, having gone through all that, we do, we have no further comment, we've addressed Mister Conliffe's report.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yes, can we get the full screen? Thank you. Board members, y'all have any questions?
Mister Chairman, I do.
Yes.
I saw Miss Spira has a question.
You, you can go first.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not an engineer. Where does the water, where is the water currently going? Where is the water supposed to go and what will happen when this is completed?
The water from the front portion of the site drains to the basin that we are talking about. And then it discharges to the Monmouth County Drainage System in Squonkum Road.
Okay.
The water from the rear of the site, there's a basin behind the storage buildings, you may have seen that. All that water drains to that basin, that overflows towards the marsh park.
Okay.
All the water on the site's being managed.
And Mike, with the outlet control structure for the basin, that's. Meeting all the required reductions in accordance with what was previously approved, the only change is. The basin is slightly bigger, and then obviously there's a two foot permanent pool of water because it's a wet pond and not an infiltration basin.
Yes. The enlargement is because the, the permanent pool doesn't count the storage, so your storage occurs above that elevation, yes.
And, and. In the pond, the permanent pond, the water still exits at some point?
The permanent pond stays permanent, but above that, it will start exiting through the outlet orifices in the outlet structure.
Understood, that's what I understood, okay, that, that was my confusion, thank you.
Got it.
Questions?
I saw Sherry had a question, I didn't go through her, I missed going through her report and the others, maybe I should finish doing that.
Mike, well, my report was, sorry, my was, report was pretty basic, but. I had some questions, are, if you're expanding the size, are you going to be able to plant the same plant materials? Or is there still space for those, because obviously they're not to be in a pond. And I know that we worked, you know, I worked with your engineer figuring out which species to put there because there is no buffer. You know, we, we did use a lot of shrubs, many of them evergreen to try and give a buffer, so I'm just, wasn't sure if there's going to be room for all of them.
We may have to substitute some of the trees and eliminate some of the shrubs, I mean, we want to submit a full plan. That you get to review again and still meet the intent of the buffer, but still provide shade trees for shade that's needed.
Right, but, right, so it, most of what's on there is not trees, it's the shrubs that are encircling the basin, providing the residential buffer.
That's true, but the resident, the only residence is south east of the property, immediately across the street is open land.
Is that the farmer's buffer?
It's actually D E P. Conservation land, it's not farmed, it's just D E P owned A R E six land.
Okay, so the revised plans will show more detail as far as what's gonna fit?
We'll do a separate landscape plan so that you can review that, yes.
Okay, okay.
And then as far as the other outside agencies, other than Cherry's report, there were no comments from the fire company, the Shade Tree Commission. Environmental Commission or the Farmers Advisory had no comments on this.
Any other questions of the board?
Mister Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mister.
This is for Charlie. Sir.
Yes, yep.
Is this the best we can do upfront?
Uh, you know, obviously with not having the full complement of the soil test pits and everything like that. But based on my conversations with C M E and with the applicant, it sounds like they've exhausted the efforts with soil test pits with wicks. To try to demonstrate that infiltration is not feasible for this location, so. From what they're showing, a wet pond. Looks like with two foot of clay, that's, you know, acceptable as far as this goes, so. And, and really why this came back to the board was, like I said, it was designed to be a dry basin, so an infiltration basin. After seventy two hours after a storm, there should be no water in the basin, it's just a wet pond now, so you're gonna have a two foot permanent pool after every rain event, regardless of. You know, once everything drains out, there's just that permanent, you know, two foot of water, and we just wanted to make sure the board saw that and got eyes on it. You know, before that was approved.
And then the overflow goes into the Monmouth County system.
Yes, and it's, that's the same manner as was existing, and the outlet control structure and everything is in accordance with how it was previously designed. And they're meeting all the same rate reduction, so it's just a matter of, you know, instead of having no water after a rain, seventy two after the rain, you just have that two foot of, of permanent pool there.
It's gonna look like Florida.
As long as they make sure that it's continually filled and aerated, it should.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else from the board?
No, sir.
See you none, see you none, you can move forward, sir, Mister Al Fury.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chair, Christine, are you on?
I am, hi, yes.
Christine, would, would you place your credentials on the record, please?
Hi, good evening, for the record, Christine Nazaro Cofone, I'm testifying this evening as a licensed professional planner. I've testified here in Howell on many occasions and in excess of four hundred other planning zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey. My license is current invalid.
We expect your credentials.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right, Christine, you heard the testimony of Mister Geller, and you understand the variance relief that's required for this plan revision. Would you place the necessary proofs on the record, please?
Yes, I do, I heard all of the testimony of Mister Geller, and we are just modifying the plan slightly from what was previously approved by this board. And we are seeking variance relief because the basin that we're proposing is changing, it's getting a little bit bigger as Miss Beam acknowledged. And also, it's in the front, it's in the buffer, so we do need to seek some variance relief for that. The board had previously granted that variance, but as the basin is getting larger, we have to seek what's called a D two expansion of a nonconforming use. Because the use has been, been granted and is established here, even though it's under construction, it was established by use variance. So it's a very technical application in nature, and I think Mister Tropoli, on the vote that you took before, gave you a, a great. Schooling on the D two variance and the burden of proof and how it's not like other variances where we have to demonstrate. That the site is particularly suitable for the use, and I think that you heard testimony this evening that we are going to have an aerator. And that this is what we need to do to allow for the site that is under construction to drain properly. And efficiently and safely for the area, so I think the board can certainly find that this expansion of this nonconforming use can be granted. With no substantial detriment to the public good, and in fact allows the board to continue to implement the purpose of the S E D zone. Which is to provide for a variety of economic development opportunities in, in areas where infrastructure is readily available. So I think I see in, from a planning point of view, I think that this, obviously this use is character, is consistent with the character of the area along Squonkum. And I don't see any substantial detriment that would be arising if the board were to allow for the applicant to. Allow, to have the basin in the buffer and to have the basin to be substantially larger, or not, not substantially larger, just minimally larger. And I think if the board wanted to impose reasonable conditions such as the additional tree planting. And I think if the board wanted to impose reasonable conditions such as the additional tree plantings that were requested, as well as the aerator, to continue to encourage it to look like Florida and ensure that it has, um, an attractive view. So I think that that would certainly be appropriate since we are seeking some variance relief for that. So I think if with those conditions, we certainly would satisfy our burden of proof with respect to the negative criteria, having no substantial detriment on either the public good or the zone plan. If the board were to grant this very, what I would consider technical and minor deviation for an expansion of a non-conforming use.
That's all we have from planning, Mr. Chair.
Jennifer?
I mean, I, I don't disagree at all with the testimony. I mean, you know, I do think that the modifications are needed for stormwater management purposes. Obviously, we want the drainage on the site to work. Um, you know, Charlie has assured me that this design will work. Um, and so I think the modest increase in size um, is outweighed by the stormwater management plan actually working on this property. Uh, and I know that Shari did spend a considerable amount of time working on the plantings and the buffering because we typically have fifty feet and we don't have that in this instance. Um, but I don't take exception to the request, uh, because I do think that it's a necessary change.
Thank you. Any questions from the board, Ms. Phoan? Oh. Okay, see you none. Mr. Alferi?
That concludes our presentation, Mr. Chair. We've requested that you open it to the public and then act favorably on the request so that we can finish this project that's been going on for many years.
Okay, I'll take a motion to open the public.
Make a motion where you open to the public? It's Moretti.
Moretti.
Second, Hughes.
Second by Mr. Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Eileen, at this time, we'll take the questions, comments from the public of the applicant.
The chairman has opened the hearing up to members of the public for questions or comments. If anyone would like to present anything before the board, please use the raise your hand feature. Remember, if you're on the phone, you use star nine to raise and lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
Thank you. Motion for open.
Once again, the chairman has opened up the hearing for members of the public. If you have questions or comments on this application, please use the raise your hand feature.
Any, Eileen, anyone?
I have no one raising their hand.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to close the public.
Thank you, Mr. Seiya.
I second it.
Second by Mr. Moretti. All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Okay. Uh, Mr. Alferi, uh, any further?
I will wave, I'll wave the summation and request that the board act favorably on the application, please.
Thank you. Any further from our professionals?
They should agree to a condition of no alligators. Just kidding.
Okay, what's pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve this application. I believe that the changes are necessary. And I feel very comfortable that there will be no alligators in the pond and and I do trust Charlie's judgment, and I'm sure Shari will make this work with the buffer in the front. My motion is to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Who was that?
Hughes.
Mr. Hughes, you got a second? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this change is obviously necessary, and I'm pleased that they made such a diligent effort in providing detailed changes for us. I vote yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
I too agree with the fellow board members and I, Sal, I, I really appreciate you guys doing the extra mile, Mr. Geller, you know, as far as coming back to the board. I, I know this went round and round about this, but you know, not, not coming back here and having a clean resolution and having this put on the resolution, you know, ten years from now, I could come back to haunt everybody. And you know, I, I really appreciate you coming back to the board to have a clean record on the application. And now, you know, we, everything can move forward with this.
And thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board and the board professionals. They were very helpful in getting this through. So we do have a clean now record of what's been approved and what will be developed. Again, thank you all.
Okay, and my vote is yes, by the way.
So she's sorry.
Thank you. Okay, let me find my. I'm not going to take a break. We're just going to move right on into the next case. Case number BA twenty-one eleven Walter Miller. The variant construct a single family dwelling dwelling with septic on an undersized lot. Advocate Walter A. Miller is applicant and full-time property LLC is owner seeking a both areas proved construct a new two-story single-family dwelling with the septic field located in the east side of the principal structure in both Lakewood Farmingdale Road and Matthews Road front yard. On an undeveloped undersized lot. Other improvements include the construction of a elevated front deck porch with stairs, elevated rear deck porch with stairs, one-story detached garage and a gravel driveway servicing the single-family dwelling and detached garage from Matthews Road on premises known as block three twenty-one or two twenty-one, lot one at the corner of Lakewood Farmingdale Road and Matthews Road. Expiration date, September eighth, twenty twenty-one. Okay.
You need to give me a minute. I'm trying to get Mr. Miller into the meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Miller, if you're on the meeting, please be prepared to put your camera on.
Got her. Unmuting self. Oh, there's, there he is.
Hello.
Howdy.
Sorry about that. I was trying to figure out how to get this working. This is my first Zoom meeting here. So. All right.
Mr. Miller, do you have any professionals that are going to be testifying?
Uh, no, I was just going to represent myself.
Okay. Uh, okay, Mr. Tropoli, you want to swear him in?
Right. And then after I swear in, Mr. Miller, I just want to ask Mr. Conley for a question before we get too far. So Mr. Miller, would you raise your right hand, please? You swear the testimony you give this evening would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth of God.
I do.
Thank you. State your name for the record, please.
Walter Miller.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Conley, and I have some, from a board attorney perspective, I have some serious concerns about the applicant going forward without any engineering testimony, given the fact that this board has had history with mounted septic systems and has in fact looked with some disfavor. I don't know whether or not you've had any a conversation with the applicant's engineer or with the applicant himself, but uh, you know, and Mr. Chair, I have some concerns. I mean, I know it took a while for this gentleman to come here. Maybe we could do some things tonight, but Charlie, I'll defer to you on the engineering. I mean, I think we need some professional testimony at minimum. Again, not, you know, not to, it, it put Mr. Miller at a disadvantage, but I think we should establish the, you know, the game rules right now.
Yeah, no, Mr. Tropoli, I, I agree with you. There's a significant amount of elevation change that's being proposed with this application uh, to one, install a septic system on the lot. And then also, um, you know, approximately three quarters of the lot is encumbered by wetlands or wetlands buffers. They have indicated on the plans that there's a need for the filing of a freshwater wetlands general permit six. So I'd just like to ask, you know, professional, where are the status of they are with that? Have they reached out to DEP on the likelihood of getting a permit to fill the, the lot? You know, I think behind the dwelling, they're filling the lot by approximately three feet in the front where the septic system is proposed. Um, they're filling it on the range of five to six feet. Um, particularly of concern with this, with this property. Obviously, as I noted, there's wetlands that have been delineated on the applicant survey and plan. Um, and the reason why they appear to be wetlands is the lot itself is uh, considerably lower than both Matthews and Lakewood Farmingdale Road. Um, I can tell you from my professional experience, uh, working on capital projects for the township, we actually worked on the repaving of Matthews Road five or six years ago. And the design of that road for as far as grading, that road sheet flows um, from, make sure I have my bearings right, from north to south onto the subject parcel. And the applicant's proposing to raise the lot, like I said, considerably. So I have concerns about that becoming a stormwater runoff issue to, to Matthews Road and the public right of way and those properties to the north. And then also, uh, like I said, from Lakewood Farmingdale Road, um, the road gutter along Lakewood Farmingdale Road is considerably flat and a lot of that area kind of just sheet flows off onto the subject property. And now the, the front yard area is being elevated, you know, five to six feet at the highest point of that causing an issue, one for, for water on, um, Lakewood Farmingdale Road, but also where does that water now go, uh, onto adjacent properties? So, you know, without having a, an engineer or, or a professional, uh, that having worked on the design of the plans, you know, I, I don't, I don't think it's in the applicant's best interest to, to go through and, and put all the proofs on the, on the record here with those concerns. And then, you know, we have on prior applications had a lot of, um, discussion about mounted septic systems in the front yard. Um, you know, the board has asked if the applicant explored the uh, possibility of an alternate design where you can reduce the mound height to make it barely noticeable. Um, having said that, on this type of site where they're proposing five to six feet of fill, I, even with an alternate design, I don't know what that's going to look like. But I think the board needs to see what the best case scenario for that septic system would be. Um, also on that lines with the mounted septic system in the front yard. Uh, obviously Lakewood Farmingdale Road is a county road. Matthews Road is, is a local road. So there's a site triangle requirement along that corner that's, that's also required. And I would have questions without having the site triangle shown on the plans. How does this elevation change in the front yard impact that site triangle? Um, you know, we just want to make sure that whatever's being proposed doesn't cause any potential traffic safety issue for, for the general traveling public on either of those, those roadways. Um, that's the nutshell of it. The considerable amount of fill, which is, um, you know, a lot of it is driven by the septic system in the front yard. And then also the fill in the rear yard causing issues, you know, allowing water flow through from Matthews Road. And then, you know, just for the applicant's, um, best interest, if, if they are going to proceed with this, it's in their best interest if they're proposing any kind of walkways or patios in the rear yard that that be depicted on the site plan, uh, for the board's consideration. Because i- if this, if you potentially get approval from the board for what you're showing now, and you want to get a permit at a later point to put in a patio, you're, you're going to have to come back to the board to get approval for building that one in a wetlands area. And then also, um, you know, uh, increasing the impervious coverage on this lot. I, I can't I got to double check and make sure that that doesn't cause a, uh, an impervious cover variance, variance. And, um, just generally, you know, we've got a lot of questions. There's a, a garage at grade for the proposed single-family dwelling, and then there's another detached garage. You know, is there in, what's the use and need for that additional detached garage? Um, you know, like I said, this area is all environmentally constrained. The applicant, provided they can get all outside agency permits, has the ability to, 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 uh, develop the piece of property. I think we just want to know, you know, everything that's proposed, the full scope and, and is, is it necessary absolutely for, for, for what's being proposed? So.
Well, has there been any filings with the DEP for, for any of this?
Yes, and, no. In fact, uh, we do have the, uh, GP six permit already approved uh, for the infill of the wetlands. It's shown for the eleven thousand forty-two square feet.
Can you provide that for the board's record? Was that obtained after the application submittal or before?
No, it was before the submittal. I just wasn't aware that it needed to be submitted with the, uh, submittal.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I do apologize because there was, um, since the review, the engineer's review letter, we did do a slight modification. Well, actually, it was quite a bit of concession just because of the, the concerns you had. And it was submitted last month, but I'm just assuming that maybe I, I didn't submit it properly because we dropped it off, but then um, there was an issue with our, uh, public notice that kind of held us up for a month. But, um, so I, I'm assuming that that update didn't reach you. But what we did was, uh, we did take into consideration the concern about the mound, mounted, um, septic and we turned the house, got rid of the basement. Uh, so that way we could reduce the elevation overall, moved the, uh, conventional bed back. And even though it is technically considered a mounted, uh, septic system, the way we were grading it along the contour that, that, uh, the side of the, the, uh, structure would allow to be much more gradual where originally we were showing a twenty-five percent slope. At this point, now we're down to about a six percent slope towards, um, Lakewood Farmingdale Road and like a ten to twelve percent slope. Um, you know, and also create a swell to allow the water to continue to run. So there was quite a bit of modifications to address those concerns.
Yeah, Charlie, you didn't get any of it, did you?
No, I didn't. I didn't.
Get anything either.
No.
Yeah, I apologize. I don't know what had happened. I know we, um, hand-delivered it on the day we dropped off all the public notice information last month. But, um, I noticed today that it wasn't listed on the agenda, so.
Did, did you submit anything to Monmouth County Board of Health for the septic system? And do you have any idea where you are with the approval process on that?
I did. We actually had our soils logs done, witnessed. Uh, the design was completed. We just didn't really complete the application until, of course, we have approval.
Okay.
Is, so you're saying though, um, you guys, you are now proposing to utilize an alternate design to reduce the mounding. So instead of, you know, what are we looking at for fill in the middle of the lot? Are we talking about a foot or two or?
Yeah, well, so technically, under the seven nine A code, it still is considered a mounted system, but because we're infilling around the, uh, property and around the, the building, it doesn't necessarily look like a mound anymore. It's a much more gradual slope. We were able to pull the system further back. I, the original design had, uh, the two-car garage underneath the structure. What we did was eliminate that, which allowed us to pull the system back another ten feet and allowed a mu- much more gradual slope. It's very natural. It's only, uh, at the very center. It's um, seventy-six point seven at the center of the, the bed, and then it comes down to seventy-six point two at the ends. And then from there, we just tapered down uh, at approximately thirty-five feet. We're coming down by three feet.
Yeah, so I, I mean, Mr. Chair, I'd have to see the revised plans based off the elevations that you're saying. It's pretty simple. I know you're saying you pulled it back in closer uh, to the dwelling, so further away from Lakewood Farmingdale Road. But that's still, you know, five feet of fill, um, in front of the, the dwelling, um, in the lot. So there's, there is going to be some impact to the grading. Even if it's more gradual, if, if both those roadways do sheet flow onto the property, you know, this is still going to impact the way that, that, that water flows. Um, kind of as part of this too, uh, you know, I would, I would recommend the applicant, if they haven't already, reach out to the adjacent properties to hear any concerns that they may have. if they haven't already, reach out to the adjacent properties to hear any concerns that they may have regarding the application, specifically the fill and impacts of stormwater runoff. You know, once you're raising the site by five or six feet, not only are you stopping water from flowing, you know, Matthews, but you're also increasing the slope of, of your property. So you're increasing the rate that water flows onto adjacent properties, so, you know. I encourage the applicant to reach out to the adjacent property owners to get some input and make sure you've heard their concerns and have, you know, answers to address those.
We did reach out through public notice. We didn't receive any comments back from the only, one and only neighbor that would really affect. And the grading does naturally head towards, I guess, the south-southwest. Even, and we are capturing stormwater off of the new dwelling as well, so we're actually reducing the sheet flow. And we're not necessarily changing the direction of the flow either.
So, Mr. Miller, I think what Charlie's trying to diplomatically say is that beyond just sending out the certified mail, it's probably in your best interest to physically go to your neighbor.
No, I understand.
And how they feel about that, because we do have people that have logged in. You're the last application on the agenda for this evening, so I would venture to guess that some of these individuals are interested in this case. And, you know, as Charlie has said, we've seen a number of applications over the years. One, not that long ago, that had a very similar circumstance, and, you know, we made them redesign it. So I look forward to seeing the revised plan. Because, you know, as a practice, having a mounted system in the front yard is not a desirable outcome. So it's definitely something that I'm gonna be looking for as far as aesthetics. And that, you know, some screening of this mounted system, whether it be gradual or not, it's gonna be something that I'm looking for moving forward.
Okay.
Not only that, you've got a site triangle regardless, you know, how gradual it is or not. If it's in that site triangle, it's gonna be obstruction.
I understand. And we did show the site triangle on the updated plan and...
We don't have that.
I understand, I know, but even then, the content, the grading of the original one was much less than 30 inches above 73 foot within the site triangle. So, I mean, again, that...
I mean, I just wanna be very clear. The reason that you're here is because you're asking this board to approve a variance.
No, I understand.
You know, all of these things that the board is trying to impress upon you are things that we have required of other applicants in support of the variance relief that they're seeking. So, you know, respectfully, I would take what the board chair is saying seriously. Because if there is concern about any kind of impediment to the site triangle, the likelihood is that you're not gonna be successful. So I would, you know, if what you're telling us is that these revised plans have addressed all these issues, that's great. But, you know, we're gonna need to see it. So I'm guessing, Mr. Chair, that this is not gonna be something that we're moving forward with this evening. So, you know, I mean, I think probably we should get those plans, get a new date, and then go from there.
Yes, and I also, we need all approval, outside approvals that's been submitted. We need chronological, if there's DEP approval, we need that. Definitely need that part of the application. Yeah, because that, that'll help clear up a lot of things, too.
Absolutely.
Okay, and then, Mr. Chair, just one last thing. So any application that comes before the board where there's deficient right-of-way with, that it's not in accordance with the master plan recommendation, we typically require that. Matthews Road is a local road. There's only a 20-foot wide right-of-way there. For local roads, the master plan recommends a 50-foot right-of-way. Having said that, this lot is particularly narrow to require an additional 15-foot of right-of-way dedication will considerably impact the bulk setback requirements for the property. However, I think if the, if, if the board would so desire it, instead of a right-of-way dedication, roadway widening easement would then be something acceptable to not impact the bulk setbacks and things like that, but allow the township in some time in the future. Matthews Road doesn't go all the way to the Central Avenue right-of-way to the rear. But if the township ever has an intent to pave that or formalize that, then they have the right-of-way to widen the road as needed, put in stormwater management as may be needed, things of that matter. So I just ask that that be depicted on the plan when you do resubmit.
And you would want the right-of-way easement to be the 15-foot?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and just to clarify, so it's a roadway widening easement, not right-of-way dedication. So if it's right-of-way dedication, you know, you can't have any structures or anything with, within it as far as a roadway widening easement. It doesn't impact your bulk setback requirements. You're allowed to have, you know, your driveway and things within it. It serves the same purpose. It just doesn't impact your bulk setbacks. If we were to take 15-foot, you know, that buildable lot area that's shown on the property, that considerably decreases the envelope.
Absolutely, yeah, sure. Okay.
Okay, Eileen, when do we have the next available date? Or how long will it take you to resubmit?
I could have it submitted tomorrow. I mean, in fact, plans are ready for review. And I just need, I'll get the DEP approval permit, copy of that dropped off tomorrow.
And then anything dealing with Monmouth County, any soil logs, anything that you have?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the applicant. Couple of things, Mr. Miller. I note that you're, you have an expiration date of September 8th. So we are gonna request that you give permission to the board to hear the case through September 30th, first of all, okay?
Oh, we need to see that if we got a date.
Right, but I'm just saying, for now, I'm sure we'll hit it sometime in September. And then, secondly, Mr. Miller, again, I'm not trying to substitute my judgment for anyone else here. But I would only ask that you give great consideration to bringing back a professional engineer. As you see, Charlie is very detailed. Again, I'm not trying to tell you how to prove your case. You certainly seem very knowledgeable, but there's certain aspects of this application that would be best handled with Charlie on the record. You've seen before, Mr. Geller, for example, in an application, I believe, you may have heard, where he was able to just point by point knock out the concerns of the board. Again, I'm not suggesting that it's mandated, but I think it would make things go a lot smoother for your consideration. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Eileen, what do we have in September? You're muted, Eileen.
I have September 13th.
Will that work for you, Mr. Miller?
That's fine.
Okay.
And we'll carry, carry it with no further notice?
Yes, but you, you understand what all, what all we need to get, right?
Yes, absolutely, yep.
Okay, good. Now, just for your benefit, just reach out to Charlie, you know, through Eileen. And if you have any questions on anything, please reach out to him.
Absolutely will.
Or if you have an engineer, have them reach out to you.
Okay.
And, Mr. Miller, you agree to an extension of time through September 30th?
I do, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, case, case number BA 2111, Walter Miller. This case will be carried to September 13th, 7 o'clock, with no further notice. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Is there any further business of the board?
Just a reminder that we are not gonna go live in September. We're just, with all the uncertainty with this Delta variant, we can't take the chance of applicants noticing for live meetings. And then we don't have them live and they're canceled. So we've talked to the township manager and he's agreed we should stay on Zoom for the time being.
Okay.
And we'll reevaluate month to month.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Do we notify anybody in the audience that wants to comment on Mr. Miller's property?
It's noted, it's being carried to September 13th.
Okay, do people in the audience know that?
Yes, we made an announcement.
Okay, I didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
If they're there, it will be carried to September 13th at 7:00 PM with no further notice.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. My mistake.
That's okay, sir. Hey, any further business of the board? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn?
Motion by Mr. Moretti? Who's second by Mr. Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.
Good night.
Aye.
The participation.
Take care, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.